Clocks, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so happy to welcome everybody to the July meeting of Union Township Planning Commission. We've had Pledge of Allegiance, roll call please.
Squidward, here.
Bradshaw.
Here.
Here.
Hayes is excused, Lapp.
Here.
McDonald.
Here.
Olver.
Here.
Shingles.
Here.
Thering.
Here.
We have a form.
Okay, thank you. So next item is approval of the agenda. We have a short agenda tonight, but is there anything, anyone is aware of that needs to be on tonight, anything else that needs to be on tonight's agenda? Or any corrections or changes to the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
It was a motion by Olver, second by Lapp to approve the agenda as prepared. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so agenda's approved. Next item is the minutes from July, or June 17th, starting on page three of your packet. Are there any corrections to the June 17th minutes?
Move to approve the minutes.
Support.
Okay, there was a motion by Shingles and a second by Olver to approve tonight's, or the June, June 17th minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so our minutes are approved as prepared. Next item is correspondence, board reports, and presentations. We always start with Commissioner Thering, updates from Board of Trustees.
Thank you, sir. On our Board of Trustee meeting on 6/25, we went over, what I have on my notes, two different things. We go over the governance policy. Throughout the year, we pick certain parts of the policy, we review it, we make changes, it's how we operate. So, we did some of that. The one we worked on that particular day was meeting, meeting assignments, meeting pay, what you're eligible for, what you're not eligible for. Talked a little bit about the things that we should be doing. And we do that a lot, too, on the other governance policies. The other thing that we discussed is a, it's a right-of-way for a sidewalk on Bud Street. Bud Street is, if you take Pickard, just beyond the next door food store, just beyond the Heart Doctor, you can take a left to go into Jameson Park. On the east side of the road, there, the township was proposing a sidewalk there. We are kind of at a standstill, maybe there's some new developments. Mr. Nanny had said there was some discussion today about that. Maybe not, but there was some difference in opinion on where the right-of-way was. So the township did a survey and they feel the right-of-way is, for the sidewalk is, you know, we'll just say here, and maybe the county feels they're not sure about that. So, we're kind of just working through that at this point in time. On the 7/9 Board of Trustees meeting, we approved sidewalk construction along Bluegrass from Mission to the entrance of Indian Hills Shopping Center, which is right in front of Fred Lobster. There'll be about a seven-foot sidewalk put there. And then, there is a sidewalk from that entrance to the other entrance or exit, you might want to say, that takes you right to Dick's Sporting Goods. And then we will pick up and do another section of sidewalk from there, continuing to the east, just behind, basically to the next property line. So it'll probably take you just behind the store. Did some other governance policy review. That's what we did on the 9th. And the last, but not least, Union Township is in partnership with the Care Store. The Care Store is affiliated with the Strickler Center. Union Township will be hosting a Care Store drive July 1st through the 31st. All donations can be dropped in a box, or dropped in a drop box located at the Union Township Hall, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:30 PM, here at the Township Hall. If you would prefer to do cash or checks, those are welcome. If you do a check, make the check payable to the Care Store. Some of the items, toothbrushes, deodorant, body wash, cleaning project, laundry detergent, those types of items. This Care Store provides personal and hygiene items and household cleaning products that are not eligible for retail purchase through bridge cards to anyone in Isabella County that has a referral from one of their partnering agencies. Sorry, that was, it got stuck there for a minute. Anyway, this has been going on, this is our second or third year, our third year. Every year's been successful, so I know we all are excited about that, so let's make this year even more successful. And that is all I have.
Okay, any questions for Commissioner Thering on Board of Trustees related matters?
And this was started by our very own Tara and Amy. Let's not let them down.
All right, thank you, thanks for the report. Next item is Commissioner McDonald, updates from ZBA, I don't know if there are any.
There hasn't been a meeting.
Okay. And next item is the Community and Economic Development Monthly Report. And so that is, that report is always in your packet. It starts on page nine of the packet and has essentially all the entries on pretty much everything that's taken place over the last month. And so, we always give commissioners an opportunity to ask any questions that they might have regarding anything that might be in the monthly report. There is some statistical information in there in answer to a question that was raised last month regarding numbers of permit applications for single-family homes that were approved over the recent period of months. Any questions from commissioners on the monthly report? Okay, well hearing none, you're always welcome to direct any questions that you might have to Rodney. Okay, are there any other reports or correspondence that anyone has that needs to come before us tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. We have two public comments at every meeting. One is towards the beginning of the meeting, and this one is for items that are not on tonight's agenda. If there's anyone either present in person or online who wants to address the Planning Commission on any item that is not on tonight's agenda, they're welcome to do so at this time. If you're here in the room, come to the podium, give us your name and address for the minutes. If you are online, make your presence known and we will make arrangements for you to be able to speak. Give us your name and address for the minutes, and we ask that you limit at least your initial comments to three minutes. Public comment is open at 7:09.
There's nobody online.
Okay, the online room is empty tonight. And the folks that are here appear to be here for other purposes. Last call for public comments at this time. There's an extended public comment towards the end of the meeting, which is unrestricted as to topic. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment at 7:09. And so we're ready to move on to our new business. We have one new business item tonight. It is a preliminary site plan review, P R E S P R 25-03, for the new Cold Wind Brewing located at 2705 South Isabella Road. We'll have introduction from Rodney, and then we'll hear from the applicant, and then we will take it up.
Thank you, you should have it in your packet, our report dated July 8th. As was mentioned, this is a new microbrewing business. Going into an existing building, currently it has been a floor-covering business. They've had location for many years. Supposed to be converted over to a microbrewery. They are, the current, a floor-covering business, essentially occupies one of two lots there. Two vacant lots and a floor-covering business lot. This business would use all three, including expanded parking area and also some outdoor activity areas. So, as I said, you have our report dated July 8th, just like there's a few of the highlights. One is related to sidewalk, there is a sidewalk, existing sidewalk, right up near the edge of Isabella Road. In conversation with the project engineers, we're looking at early versions of this, determined that it was really best to relocate that sidewalk a little further from the road. It helped with their activities, our crossing point, the driveway. It also moves the sidewalk back away from the road, so it increases pedestrian safety. And so for a number of reasons, the plans you see, essentially, for a new sidewalk along the front of the property, is pulled back, it'll be out of the existing right-of-way, it'll be in a separate instrument. And you'll see on the flight, it curves back in to connect to the existing sidewalks at the north and south ends. That does affect, we'll talk for a minute, in a minute about landscaping. That does impact the landscaping, front yard landscaping requirements, because that sidewalk would be in that area with landscaping where it normally be. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. The only other detail really that we noted was an issue with the trash enclosure. Very minor issue. Our ordinance says that trash enclosures have to be in the rear yard. And it defines a rear yard as basically between the rear of the building and the rear property line. And for the existing building, the floor-covering building, of course, it's a long, narrow building. It goes well back on, to the back of the lot, and it creates a fairly narrow space, about 60 feet wide, to put that enclosure. So, I'm talking to the engineer, they're able to make that adjustment. Showed room to do that, but it will require that enclosure to slide a little further to the east than it is now, towards that rear lot line. The landscaping item, if you look, turn to page 34 of your packet, page four of our report, looking at the primal site plan items. The applicant has asked for, in his consideration of an, like the ordinance calls them, an alternative landscape design. This is really the section 10.07, which is type modification of landscape requirements. And allows you as a planning commission to accept an alternative design. If you find it still, it's consistent with the intent, the ordinance, and the other criteria there in section 10.07. In this case, the, one of the main reasons for making this change is because of the need to, in preference, to slide that sidewalk back. It does limit what landscaping in the front, there is still some landscaping along the front that's proposed, but it will be less than what otherwise would be there. That landscape essentially is proposed to be added to the back of the property, along the east, or rear lot line, which is a part of the site that affords residence. There are residences further to the east there. And the proposal essentially is to leave up the landscaping along the back of the lot. So, you'll see the double row of shrubs, these are arborvitae shrubs, procarrosporium, evergreens, that propose to help create a shrubbed bucket that exists there. And then, you'll see a number of deciduous trees that are proposed there. We noted in our report, zoning administrator noted that we'd like to see, or we need to see four additional trees in order to be consistent with section 10.07. And we talked to the engineer, they can take care of that, add those in, those will all be added in that rear area there. So with that comment, we're comfortable with recommending acceptance of the alternative landscape design. We believe it's a good fit for the lot, a good fit for this site, which is partially a reuse of an existing building, but partially sort of new development, I'm making a plan. So it's a good tip with the layout. There are some other housekeeping items, they will need to combine the lots together. But that is later in the process. So, what we've done, in a recommendation, we recommended this plan for approval, preliminary site plan approval, subject to four conditions. And the four conditions include acceptance of the alternative landscape design with the addition of those four trees. And these are all designed essentially to set the applicant up to be able to perhaps get administrative approval of the final site plan. You know, last year we amended our zoning ordinance to allow the option for administrative approval of the final site plan when the zoning administrator finds that everything meets all the requirements. No conditions, no questions. And so by having these conditions in the preliminary set, these would be part of what they would meet. And if they meet them, then it could consume the administrative approval. So with that in mind, I'm happy to answer a question.
We are not allowed to accept any samples of proposed business products.
You absolutely are allowed to enjoy going to the grand opening.
And I'm sure we will.
You are now invited.
I tried to get chicken from somebody earlier and I couldn't get that either.
However, if a quorum of the members are going to be there, we're going to have to put a notice out front that,
Oh, yes.
Put a meeting's notice that there's no planning commission business while alcohol beverages being considered.
Questions for, other questions for Rodney? Can I just confirm with you, am I correct that, based on our ordinance, that no screening is required to the south because the next lot further south is still B5?
Correct.
Even though it's occupied by a home, I believe?
It is, but it's zone B5, so it does not require the screen.
All right. No questions? Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll hear from the applicant at this point? Anything you'd like to, anything you'd like to say, and then stand for questions?
Most important thing that I need to say is I don't really want to show.
No, thank you, my son goes there.
I'm Tim Beebe with Central Michigan Survey and Development, address is 2257 East Springfield Road, just down the road. There were really only two items, and we had discussed them prior to the meeting, and we had no issue with making those modifications. So, the trees will be added, the dumpster will be adjusted. We understand that we've got to get all our outside approvals, and appreciate the consideration for administrative review. So with that, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to try and answer anything that's on the site plan. We have the construction manager here, and also the owner. So if you have any questions for them, I'm happy to try and address them.
Okay, it's open for questions from commissioners?
I do have a question in regards to the dumpster enclosure. So you guys had initially planned to have it in the, I'm guessing this is the southeastern portion of the lot? Is that correct?
It's going to be slid approximately 15 feet or so farther to the east, towards the residential, to get it behind the building line.
Ah, I see, I see. Because yeah, I guess I had some confusion there with Rodney saying that it had to be behind the building and land, but that the way that the current existing building is makes that kind of awkward. I see that the front of the building basically faces the, almost the back of the side, yeah, so, okay. Rodney, would that, that would conform then, even though it's technically like in front of the building, but because it's behind the line of the building, it would be considered the rear?
Right, I know the entrance faces to the side, but our ordinance would call the side facing the front.
Gotcha, okay.
So as long as it's behind the line of the rear building line.
Okay.
As it extends across the lot, let me find that, agree about 15, I think I said mine reported about 17, but it just has to be slid back just that little bit to be here.
Okay.
It'll be slid east and rotate it a bit to align.
Okay. That's all the question I had.
Can I ask a question about the bathrooms? Are they unisex? Or I didn't, I don't quite understand the bathroom configuration.
Generally, unisex, yes.
Give approval with the conditions, then they would be set up with the opportunity to not have them come back.
Correct.
That is correct, yes. The amendments that were adopted last year allow for, basically, the zoning administrator does his normal review of the site plan, and if he finds in the review of the final site plan that everything is in good order. All the conditions have been met, all the ordinance requirements have been met, all the outside agency permits are in place. Essentially, there's no, there's nothing for planning commission to review. Normally, what we bring to you are things that you need to make judgment. And if everything's in good order and meets all the requirements, then the ordinance says it's right now to allow for the zoning administrator to approve the final site plan.
And then just to make, you're satisfied with the requirements that are the requirements that we talked about?
The requirements would be the same, whether they're actually back in front of you or through.
Right, but I mean, you have, you don't have, you're not asking us to make any judgment on that. You're saying you're satisfied, you're fine with that.
We're working through utility discharge, how much water we need, kinds of that sorts, we can deal with. Fire department has already done their initial review. So I don't perceive any issues. We have some things that are outstanding, and that's why we're not, fine. But obviously, like, things have to be put together with it. But no, we just appreciate the opportunity of not having to wait for a meeting in case I can get it done.
I would like to be able to do that for you as well.
Just out of curiosity, is Cold Wind an extension of Fourleaf?
It isn't.
Partner or separate entity?
I mean, it is, I joke that they're siblings. But it is separate, and it is bigger and better from Malplezance. I'm the owner of Fourleaf Brewing in Clare, Michigan, and it's a great to be downtown, and a great small downtown, but this is going to be emphasis, this is going to be for outside, so siblings, but not related. I mean, totally different.
And what is the origin of Cold Wind as far as the naming?
I joke, it's because my business partners are hockey players. But there isn't a whole lot of origin to it, but what I can tell you is that it is about having a lot more outdoor space and really being, what I found as a business owner in COVID is that people want to be outside, and three seasons, if not four seasons, needs to be the emphasis, and beer drinkers seem that to mind.
Very cool, thank you.
Do you have, you know who that is in terms of the minutes? Can you identify yourself for the minutes?
Sure, yeah, absolutely, I'm not shy. My name is Amy Shindor, I live in Clare. I am the owner of Cold Wind Brewing, as well as Fourleaf Brewing in downtown Clare. Celebrating our 10th year this year. So if you need some samples, Steve Swainy is one of my business partner, as well as Bill Scott. So I'm coming with a powerhouse of great brewing ability and knowledge to create Cold Wind Brewing here in Malplezance.
So I'm looking at the last page with the landscaping and other things. The area that's marked outdoor recreation area, the note on page three says it will be used The area that's marked outdoor recreation area, the note on page three says it will be used for outdoor activities. What sorts of activities?
To be determined. You know, lawn darts and horseshoes aren't allowed anymore, but you know, I do eventually think that there might be a possibility of having corn pole or you know, bocce ball is what I always romanticized about having, but those will definitely be future plans. Again, the emphasis being outdoor space. People really do crave to be able to sit outside, which is nice because for us, it's at the back of the building, which means you're not sitting next to a major road or having that kind of interference of noise. We'd have no definite plans.
Okay. But that is also the closest spot to the residential, just on the other side of the proposed shrubs.
The next thing about owning a brewery, and I have for 10 years in Four Leaf in Clare, is that a brewery isn't a last-call location. Four Leaf closes at 10 a.m., or 10 p.m., sorry. We don't open till noon. And that's the same thing about this brewery, is what's nice about it is that it's not a late-night sort of location. So I think it would be really nice for those neighbors, we plan to be good neighbors, especially since they're kind of, they have deeper lots and we have kind of a deeper lot as well.
So you'll close at 10, even on Saturday night?
We, I think we propose between 10 and 11, depending on the season. You know, interestingly enough, in Mount Pleasant, which is totally different from Clare, the 11 p.m. is more of a winter time, when you're not going to be sitting outside, where Clare, it's in the summertime. Well, Clare is busy in the summer, Mount Pleasant is busy in the winter. They're very opposite, even though they're only 13 to 15 miles apart.
Got a good menu planned?
Yes, we do.
What about outdoor lighting?
Outdoor lighting is going to be a combination. Outdoor lighting is going to be a combination of wall packs and lighting in the parking lot. As part of our final site plan, we'll be turning in a full photometric form for review.
Okay, so nothing on a pole then?
No, there's in the parking lot area where the grass areas are. In fact, I think we showed that on the plan.
At the central part of the parking lot.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at that.
So the, just one quick comment on the ordinance, the exterior lighting ordinance has maximum light levels. It basically 10-foot candles within the site, but it's a comfortable level, it's not too bright. But it does require that at the property lines, that it drops essentially to zero, I keep it at 0.1, but it's essentially zero at the property line. So the lighting has to be designed so at that back part back there, that drops down to a variable level quickly. The outdoor areas were mentioned essentially for natural light rather than for artificial light.
Yeah, but if you have people outdoors in that grassy area, I mean, there will be times where it'll be, if not pitch dark, it'll be no longer sunlight. So there presumably will be some outdoor light in the back there, I would think.
Yeah, there's, there will be wall packs on the back where that patio shows.
Sometimes I jump in with a motion too early. I wanted to make sure there weren't any more questions before I did so.
I'll just ask one more. The, immediately to the south of the parking lot is the catch basin, right? Drainage basin?
Yep.
Retention basin. Is that completely lined in stone or just a portion of it?
No, it's a strip that has an underdrain in it, so that it keeps that dry. It doesn't turn into a marsh. So it is not completely lined with stone. It's going to be a grass area with a stone ribbon up the center, right down to the lowest part.
Okay. And there'll be a, I guess I'm not, it's hard to interpret from the pictures, but once that's in, once everything is in, how far down to the property line will it go? Is it going to be pretty much using all the space, or will there be still be some green space to the south that isn't used at all?
No, the upward slope will come up and then blend into the natural grade. So there's not much room left to the south once the base is done.
Other questions from commissioners?
I'd like to move to approve the P R E S P R 2503 preliminary site plan for the proposed Cold Wind Brewing at 2075 South Isabella Road, P I D 14-146-00-020-00-021-00 and -02200. In the northeast quarter of section 13, in the B5 highway business and B7 retail and highway service business zoning districts, finding that the site plan dated June 24th, 2025 can comply with applicable zoning ordinance requirements for preliminary site plan approval, including sections 14.2.0P required site plan information and 14.2.0S standards for site plan approval, subject to the following conditions. One, the alternative landscape design is accepted per section 10.7 modifications, provided that four large deciduous trees are added to the design to be planted further to the east between the existing red maple trees and shrubs, as shown on the plan. Two, adjust the trash enclosure location so that it is fully within the rear yard area. Three, the applicant shall provide the zoning administrator copies of the as-recorded sidewalk and cross-access easements and stormwater maintenance agreements prior to issuance of a building permit for the project. And four, township approval of a land combination application by the applicant is also required prior to issuance of a building permit for the project.
Okay, so the motion was made by Olver with the second by Bradshaw. Okay, hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Lamb?
Yes.
Quadrito?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Olver?
Yes.
Shingles?
Yes.
Baring?
Yes.
Bradshaw?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion here.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Can't wait.
All right. So that's been approved, and hopefully if all goes well, we won't have to see it again. But if we do, we do. It's not a problem. That was our one new business item tonight. So we're ready to move to extended public comment. If there's anybody who would like to address the planning commission on any item, whether it was on tonight's agenda or not, you're welcome to do so at this time. If you're in the room, come to the podium, give us your name and address for the minutes. If you're online, make your presence known, and we will make arrangements for you to be able to speak. Extended public comments open at 7:34. Nobody's online. Our audience has departed for greener pastures. So we'll go ahead and close that back up for another month. Next item is final board comment. Any comments from board members?
Just a procedural question. When it comes to public comment, is that open to anyone or is that restricted to union township residents?
No, I think it's legally open to anyone, correct?
Okay.
When,
Haven't thought of it before.
When we have a public hearing, if I remember, I usually try to dissuade the applicant from using the public comment portion because they always get an opportunity to speak anyway. But sometimes I forget, and sometimes they do speak, and I generally don't, you know, don't attempt to silence them. But yeah, open to anybody.
That popped up when she said she was a Clare resident, and I just wondered what the protocol was there. So thank you.
Other comments from board members, commissioners? Okay, if not, then, well, let me just ask, because I typically ask, what's our August agenda looking like? Anything exciting coming along the pike? Anything we should be aware of?
We do have Leo's Coney Island, a big chicken restaurant that is moving along towards their final site plan. We'll see if they have it submitted in time for next month's meeting.
That's the one down on Bluegrass?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, okay.
Is that a garden in front of the Walmart, right?
And we will have master blind material.
There's like an empty office to be determined later type thing?
Yeah.
One of the elements of our master blind project was a housing assessment, where we were working with the East Michigan Council of Governments, a regional planning agency that covers this county and 13 others. And they put together a regional housing study, and they offered to have a consultant do a more detailed study of individual communities for a remarkably small fee. And so we did agree to do that. I had no idea when it was going to get done. I have the draft. And the updated draft, because there were some corrections that had to be made, will be available around the end of this month. So we'll have, definitely have master blind material, including this, on the August agenda.
Okay, sounds good.
Was there any particular resolution to the Mid-Michigan College question in terms of the utility usage?
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Sure, yeah. You all were slated to have a meeting with Mid-Michigan College about the event center after our meeting, and I was just curious of the outcome of that.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we noted the report, but we didn't say anything about the outcome. So the process is moving forward. The college and township have agreed to, the steps are taken forward, looking at essentially addressing the sewer capacity issue through funding, putting escrow to cover the future upgrades to a pump station as that becomes necessary. So that process is moving forward. Plans are currently in the hands of our Public Services Department. They're reviewing them for water and sewer in detail. And Peter is also reviewing the plans informally for zoning issues. Basically, once we have the Public Services Department's approval, they have the last outside agency we need. So once they complete their review and let us know that they have approved the plans as presented, then they will actually formally submit a final site plan for review. And I expect, and my understanding is that that will be something we can address administratively. The project engineer has made clear that that is his intent, is to make sure he dots all the i's and crosses all the p's so that it can be approved administratively.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, well, thank everybody for their participation tonight. We've completed our agenda, so we'll stand in adjournment until August.